Good evening and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education Regular Meeting of December 17, 2024. We'll have the pledge of allegiance to the flag and a moment of silence. I suggest that one of those silence this evening is for the families and students at Madison High School in Wisconsin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, and in this world of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. May we hear the roll call, Mrs. Struz?
Yes, Mr. Eversman?
Here.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Here.
Mr. Zaviski?
Here.
And we need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
All right, I have it as Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. And we're going to start off with our STAR students this evening, if you want to come forward. And they're going to give us a little presentation about what's going on at STAR School.
Thank you for having us. I'm Hayley Hoffman. I am the STAR Student Council Advisor this year. Our student council is made up of fourth graders. We meet once a month to discuss upcoming events and what the members' responsibilities will be for those events. Some of the events we have for this year, in November, we had a canned food drive. Food items were donated to local food pantry. In December this week, we are having a glove and hat drive, and those donations will be donated to the discount children's services. And in January, we'll have a spirit day. February, we'll celebrate Random Acts of Kindness Week. March and April will also be Spirit Day. And in May, we will do Staff Appreciation Week. And the Spirit Day donations will be made to Hope Toledo or our staff needs that you bring down.
We discussed the upcoming food drive and made signs.
During our November meeting?
Um, for the fall food drive, we had kids and teachers come in and donate food for families in need. And we went around and collected them all, and we sorted them into boxes as they were sent to families in need.
We discussed the upcoming hat and coat drive and made the signs.
That was for our December meeting. And then we're excited to announce that people will be getting a therapy dog from Paradise Dog during the spring. And STAR Student Council is going to kind of head that at STAR. We're very excited. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, and next, we're going to do recognition, Mr. Jurski and Mr. Fritz, and our equestrian team, of which we are very, very proud. Want to come forward, people?
This is the first time, I think they're shy. Come on up, get up here. Well, standing before you is our equestrian team, which accomplished something very special this year in qualifying for the state competition. I believe that was probably our first time we qualified as a team, correct? Um, our team has been around probably now for about 10 years, give or take a little bit, started a little bit. Um, some people are very familiar with the team, but they did a great job. I learned a lot about equestrian when I was out there Sunday, um, watching them and cheering them on. But Coach did a fine job with them this year as well, so we just wanted to recognize their hard work, paid off for them this year. And I have a little certificate for you, so when I come forward, please get your certificate from Dr. Fritz. First person, Ethan Ackerman. Alicia Duran. I don't believe Francesca's here. Jenna Huntermark. Kaitlyn Loner. And Camden Seacord. And of course, I want to introduce their coach. And I'll give you an opportunity, if you would like. Rachel Loner was their advisor coach this year.
This team, I think they really worked hard. They kind of came together as a team. Very proud to be at State. State didn't quite go as we had hoped. Um, we definitely came in as the underdogs, and it would have been great to pull off an upset, but definitely wasn't in the cards. Um, not just about these guys. They're working with animals that are much larger than themselves and have brains that do things as they want. So, um, things didn't quite go as we wanted at State, but we made it there and very proud of these guys. Um, also, uh, very appreciative, Mr. Jurski came out. If you've never been at an equestrian team meet, it's basically like a track meet, um, but with horses. So it starts right away in the morning and runs for eight hours of different events. And he stuck with us for the whole day. Uh, Ms. Molnar has come out to support us, um, quite frequently, so we do appreciate that support. Thank you. Um, sure. Francesca's got a spoon. We're short one.
Congratulations, congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, people. Good job. And if you would like to leave now, you certainly are welcome to go. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Because we know you have homework for the exam this week.
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Struz, do you have any cards?
I have no cards.
I have no cards either, so there will be no public participation this evening. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. And back to Mrs. Struz.
All right, thank you.
Your report?
Yes. Um, I will note that there is no updated term appropriation measure. It is on the agenda, but there was no need to want it this time. Very brief report. Um, I, we did finally, um, get our updated values from the discounting auditor, and I made, just to recap in front of you so you could take a look. You can see the change from fiscal calendar year '23 to calendar year '24. For the different kinds of property, for ag res, it's 31.95% increase. I'm sure people have felt that or seen that on their own duplicates. Um, commercial industrial, it only raised 17.89%. Public utility real property was 11.03%. So the total real value increased 28.48%. And then personal property, which is the only kind, and it's only public utility, personal property, only other type of, um, valuations we get. Um, that increased nine and a half percent. So as a whole, our total valuation went up 26.5%. Um, I have the makeup here. Obviously, this is broken down into different classes of real estate. So every single class of real estate has a different effective millage that goes against it when we're actually calculating our income. Um, I have a little graph here just to show you the district valuation makeup. Um, you know, 71% of our property is residential ag, 18 is commercial real estate, 2% is public utility real. And then, um, public utility tangible is 9%. So that kind of gives you an idea of what our community is made up of for taxable for the school district. Um, I know it doesn't always feel like it, but as valuations increase, this is my bi-monthly report. As valuations increase, the effective millage rate decreases for what the school will collect. The only exception is inside millage. We do have six inside mills, but otherwise, effective millage will roll back so that the school district will only receive the amount that was approved by the taxpayers. I have not received effective millage rates just yet for the general fund or the permanent improvement fund. I did want to make the board aware, I'm pretty sure I sent this out in my letter, but I want everyone aware that the bond fund, which is what's paying for the building that we, um, the building project we started years ago, the taxable millage will go from 3.5 down to 2.5. So it's being reduced by one mill, which will help taxpayers, but it's of course because the valuations went up. They do a quick calculation and work with us on balances and what the debt payment will be, and that's how that's established. True cash days at the end of the month were 185, but it is a decline from last year at this time of almost three weeks, 23 days. So, um, you know, while we have strong cash balances, we are deficit spending. So just little reminders. Um, if there are questions, that is my report quickly for the month.
May I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report, please?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call?
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Does anyone have a need for executive session? Okay, we shall move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on consent agenda items.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Moving on to new business. We have farmland bids. We need a motion to enter into a five-year land rental agreement at four district-owned locations. Pickle behind Coy School, Pickle and Win, Win in, I'm sorry, Seaman between Coy and Lawlandor and Cedar Point and Norden for a total of 94.36 acres. The property is not used for educational purposes. There's a range from $23,525.76 to $12,045.62. And we recommend entering into a five-year lease agreement with Paul Soltes for an annual rate, rental rate of $23,525.76. It's the highest and most responsible bid. May we have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question, Carol. Shane, where does, does this money go to a special fund for future use or it goes right into the general fund?
No, I, I was just thinking, there's a breakdown. There was a percentage of this that was donated for scholarships. So there is a percentage of it, I think it's 43.5%, that goes into the Clay High School Scholarship Fund, and then the rest goes into district rent.
Okay.
Rent income. And I'll get you the exact percentage. I, I don't have it outside.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Roll call?
Uh, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Moving on to item B, donations. We need a motion to follow, to accept the following donations. Dan and Satin Breones with $250 towards past due school lunches. An anonymous donor of $140 to a senior student lunch account. Noel Graham III donated $7,500 to Win Center. Two buddy benches were donated by the Exchange Club of Greater Maumee with a value of $602.60. And Pat and Don Price, $77.40 to Coy Elementary. Meyer donated a gift card of $1,000 to the Jerusalem Parents Club for the Helping Hand Fund to help support students in need. And Tony and Sean Parsaliti donated two LiveVac home kits with an estimated value of $140. One goes to Jerusalem and one to Eisenhower Intermediate. May I have a motion, please?
So moved with gratitude.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Moving to item C, graduating seniors. We need a motion to approve the list of Clay High School graduates pending fulfillment of state and local requirements. The list was provided to the board. It will be Friday, this coming Friday, at 11:30 in the Learning Commons. And there are either three or four students. May I have a motion, please?
So moved with congratulations.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item D, the science of reading stipends. We need a motion to authorize the treasurer to pay the science of reading stipends as determined by the curriculum director of $1,200 and $400 according to the requirement set forth by the House Bill 33, the state operating budget for the entire period of the grant. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? And the roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item E, course offerings handbook from Clay High School. We need a motion to approve the 24-25 course offerings handbook for Clay High School. This handbook has been distributed to the board. Now you have a motion, please?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call?
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item F, the work-based learning student handbook. We need a motion to approve, approve the Clay High School work-based learning student handbook. This handbook has been distributed to the board. That's for Kruger Tech people. Um, may I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item H, we need a motion to approve the following, oh, I'm sorry. Item G, police and security hourly rate. We need a motion to increase the police and security rate of pay to $55 per hour for athlete events. This brings us up to what other districts do. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Uh, Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Now, item H, we need a motion to approve the following overnight trip for Clay High School. March 30th to April 2nd, 2026 to the Nashville for the students in the band. The cost of the trip is paid for by the families of the students. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item I, membership to the Ohio School Board Association and related services and publications for 2025. We need a motion to approve the following memberships. OSBA membership for 2025, $10,338. School management news subscription, which is electronic, $150. And the legal assistance fund for $250. This keeps us up with policy from the legislature, state legislature, and they send that to us quarterly so that we are in compliance. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second? I'll second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mr. Zadizki?
Yes.
So I want to go back to item E. It's my fault. There's a miss, the 24-25, it should be 25-26. I apologize for that error.
Thank you.
Do you want a new motion to cover that? Chair?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do it.
Yes, we should do a second.
So may I have a motion, please, for the correction? I'll make the motion, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Okay, so Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zadizki?
Yes.
And Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Item J is the appointment of the president pro temp. OSBA has recommended that boards of education appoint a president pro temp at the December board meeting so that the organizational meeting in January can be opened up by that person. Thus, it would be appropriate at this time to appoint a president pro temp that would be effective January 1st, 2025, for the organizational meeting. And Mr. Durski, would you please take that roll?
It'd be a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you. And item K, we need a motion to approve the January board meetings. The Board of Education organizational and regular board meetings for January 9th, 2025, at 5 o'clock. The reason we moved that from the third Tuesday to this is because the state says we have to have that organizational meeting within the first 15 days of the month, and we don't want to risk having a snow day on the 14th of January, which would be closer to the date. So, we're going to go with the January 9th date. May I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Zadizki?
Yeah.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item L, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed in the November 19th agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. And we move to Dr. Fritz with his superintendent's report.
Well, that was long. In a short time, in a short time. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Coy Elementary students and, thank you. I'm getting all these numbers incorrect today, 24, 25, I think. Anyway, STAR, yes, thank you, my apologies. Thank to STAR Elementary students for coming today and speaking, and they did a great job. And I think the staff for that, as well as Tricia for that as well. You know, I think one great thing about that slide there showing what they're doing each and every month is it highlights something I think that starts here in the elementary schools and goes to Eisenhower, you know, over to the junior high and then to the high school and that. We try to work with our students to show gratitude and appreciation this time of year especially. And you see some of the activities that our staff and students are involved in, and it's truly amazing. And we thank the staff for organizing them and the administration for organizing them and working with the students. We thank the parents for helping with those activities and highlighting the importance of giving back to the community and to those in need at this time, especially this time of year. And that leads me into my statement in regards to our staff and administration and the board. You know, it is a time to give thanks. All the tireless efforts that go into educating students. We thank all of our employees, our staff, the board as well, for being guidance in this process that we go through each and every day to provide very important education to our students. As I think back to my first few months in this district, I value all of the people that I've come in contact with and the interactions I've had and how that adds value to me, but also as I see value added to the district in those interactions and the work that's done with our staff. Each and every one of our members of our staff are very important to what we do and to the education we provide each and every day. From the time they get on a bus, the time they come to school, the time that they're educated in classrooms, that the buildings are clean, our, you know, our custodians take care of those things, our operational staff takes care of making sure, you know, the pathways are clear for them to get into the buildings, to the food service operators, and everybody in between until they get home that day is very important in the process of educating our students. And we thank them for all of the work that they do each and every day to provide a high-quality education to our students. And I can't emphasize that enough, especially in this time of showing gratitude and appreciation for all of us around us. I also want to thank the community. You know, my first few months in this district, I have truly appreciated the interactions I've had and the conversations I've had about this district and the pride that I hear about, you know, in grad, from graduates to community members who've moved in, have their kids here, and the people that have lived here all their lives. And I thank them for those conversations and providing me a little bit of history, but also helping to guide me as I make decisions and work with the board to make decisions about how to move the district forward. So I just wanted to say that and show my gratitude and appreciation for all of that. And I want to do, I want to mention one other thing is, you know, in the month of January, I'll start to give you more legislative updates during this meeting because it's, you know, there's some things going on over the next couple of days that I'm very concerned about in the state legislature. There's some things going out in Department of Education in the, you know, in Washington DC that I'm concerned about. And I'll just start to highlight those things to you so that you're on the same page as I as we work through that and we try to influence legislators to do what's best for Oregon City Schools and the students here. Because I think, you know, as we move forward, as Jane has mentioned, our five-year forecast is of concern. And as we look at our finances moving forward, I'm worried that there's going to be less money coming out of Columbus as well as Washington DC for educating students here at Oregon City Schools. So the more we can understand that, the more we can try to influence that, I think will be helpful moving forward. So I will be providing more information in the months to come, especially with the state budget that will be worked on over the next seven months or so finalized in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Fritz? Any old business? More discussion? I do have a good news report. The symphony was very well attended in spite of the cold, the wind and the snow that evening. School holiday programs are almost complete. STAR still has a show Wednesday night and batted his holiday choir on Thursday, I think. There'll be a Zoom presentation for parents on January 21st from 4:00 to 5:30. It's about dealing with temper cantrums. So check your school newsletters for details on that. The annual mini cheer clinic for students from K-36 is January 23rd. You must pre-register for that. Willing Green State University is offering arts programs for ages 5 through 19th at various times and dates. Those are in your school newsletters. Semester exams for Clay students are 18th, 19th, and 20th. Our Model UN, we haven't said anything about them yet this year, but they have done two meets, the Black Swamp Security Council Summit. Our students brought home two first-place distinguished diplomat awards for their debates, and they also hit a second place for position paper. And on the first day of the Canadian-American Security Council contest that was in Lansing, they had 10 minutes to compare their stance on a particular thing, and they brought home two bronze, two silver, and two gold medals. And I think that's really fantastic for a 10-minute presentation. In the second and third days of the contest, our students captured two seconds and a first-place award. In addition, one of our students gave the opening speech at the assembly. The topic was very unpopular because it was about Russian foreign policy, but she received high praise from both the advisors and the competition organizers for her efforts. The district is also looking for a preschool teacher for our Wynne site, so if you know anybody who's qualified, please have them check with the website. And I gave an update on Eisenhower's cans that they collected for, for the baskets this year. They are up to 1,915. Good job. That's a lot of cans of food. And from the Board of Education, everybody, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Anybody else have anything?
Can I mention one other thing? I apologize, I, I should have said something in regards to our head football coach, and I want to thank him, John Gallius. You know, he is going to step away from the program. We want to say thank you for all the years of service in that position and recognize him, especially after the season he just had, but all the years of service that he provided in that position. And thank him for that. I know he's going to enjoy some time away from the program, and we do appreciate his work in that position, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, John. Is there anything else from anyone else? How about an executive session? Okay. Announced by a special and regular monthly meeting, since January 9th at 5:00 in the afternoon, not 6:00. And with that, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
A second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mr. Zadizki?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes, and thank you, people, for coming. Appreciate it.